I'd like to call the Dallas City Council meeting in order for June 17th at 7:00 P. M. First thing on the agenda is the rule call, please.
Counselor President Schilling.
Here.
Counselor Adams.
Here.
Counselor Beriantos.
Here.
Counselor Briggs.
Here.
Counselor Collins.
Present.
Counselor Fitzgerald is excused. Counselor Jance.
Here.
Counselor Shane.
Here.
Counselor Verden.
Here.
The next thing is pledge of allegiance, please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any introductions?
Nope.
Next thing on the agenda is a public hearing, the city budget hearing for fiscal year 2024-2025. And now declare this public hearing open at 7:02. This is a public hearing on the 2024-2025 city of Dallas budget and use of state revenue sharing funds. Can we please have the staff report?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Woods. So, the budget is coming to you, the budget committee back in May met and considered the budget, held a public hearing, took any public feedback at the time, and approved the budget that was presented to them. Staff have identified one change that needs to take place between what the approved budget is and the budget you're seeing tonight, and that's because a project that we were expecting to all be in next fiscal year, we actually received significant parts this fiscal year, about $700,000 worth, so we paid for that, which is why we're adjusting it for next year, and that's the UV disinfection replacement project at the wastewater treatment plant. So, that project's now underway in this fiscal year, and it will be completed next fiscal year. So, I did include as attachment A, the sewer fund revenues, you'll see in red the proposed changes, and then on the backside on page six, again, you'll notice the, under capital outlay, the wastewater treatment facility capital improvements is being reduced by $800,000 with the total capital outlay number obviously changing, as well as total expenditures and operating contingencies in the total budget. So, that's the only change that's being proposed from what was approved by the budget committee back in May, and there's not a recommended motion because after the public hearing, this will be considered by resolution later tonight.
Does the council have any questions for staff?
Just out of random curiosity, how much of it is, since we're doing part of it in this fiscal budget, how much is going to be in the next one?
It's about half, so it's about a $1.6 million project, and we're spending about $800,000 this year.
Any other questions? Okay, does anyone from the public wish to comment at this time? Remember to please state your name and address for the record. You have up to three minutes to testify, and we will, we will alert you when you have 30 seconds remaining. At the three-minute mark, you, your testimony will end. As a reminder, if you will be testifying, please direct your testimony to the topic of the city's approval budget for the fiscal year 2024-25. Anybody who wants to speak?
So, this is just on the budget, yeah.
Okay, the hearing done. Is there any further discussion? Yes.
I just want to, again, thank staff, especially Cecilia, for the fantastic work done on the entire budget and the amendment, and how it's readable and understandable, and they just did a fantastic job.
Hearing no further discussion, I now declare the public hearing closed at 7:05. Is there any deliberation on this topic? Okay, a resolution to adopt the 2024-25 city budget and a resolution declaring the city of Dallas election to receive state revenues will be presented later in the agenda for the council's consideration. Okay, next on the agenda is application for annexation of zone change for property at 325 James Howe Road. And now we'll open the hearing at 7:06. Are there any conflicts of interest or ex parte contacts to declare? This hearing will be conducted in the following manner. We will begin with a staff report, followed by questions from the council of staff. Thereafter, we will hear from the applicant and/or the applicant's representative for a total of 15 minutes. This may be followed by questions of them from the city council. Thereafter, we will hear from all others interested in presenting testimony on this item before the city council. Each person will be provided five minutes to testify. Comments submitted by phone will be taken after in-person comments have been completed. If you will be testifying, please direct your testimony to the applicable criteria identified in the staff report or any criteria that you believe would be applicable. We will then provide the applicant with five minutes for rebuttal. After we have heard all testimony, I will close the hearing and ask the city council to deliberate, and then ask if either any motion to respond to the proposal. Will staff please present their report?
Thank you, Mayor Woods. I'll invite our city planner Chase Blue to come up and give this down report.
So, the application request in front of you is for an annexation, adding 10 acres into the city limits, and changing the zoning on that property from its current Polk County zoning to city zoning, in this case, medium density residential, the RM zone. The property in question is at 325 James Howe Road, which is in the very northwest part of town, shown there on the map. From the vicinity photo, that we can see that there are a number of undeveloped fields surrounding it, but across James Howe Road, there is a set of subdivisions under development as part of the Wyatt node, one of our master plan areas. Zooming further in, we can see that the, the site is currently developed with a horse barn, but also has a lot of undeveloped acreage there on it. The zoning for the property currently has Polk County zoning, but the zoning map would be amended with the annexation to be medium density. That's generally consistent with the medium density zoning farther to the south there on James Howe Road on that, that same west side. The comprehensive plan for the city of Dallas only has one residential designation, so the low, medium, and high-density zones are all implementing zones for that residential designation, and we really look to the locational policies in the comprehensive plan to figure out which zone to be appropriate, essentially where. Looking closer at the site, we do see there are, there is a riparian corridor on the, the west side of the property that kind of clips that bottom corner, as well as three identified wetland areas, but there is still significant developable area on that property, so something to be aware of. As far as annexation of property into the city limits, there are six approval criteria. The site has to be within the urban growth boundary. The proposed zoning has to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. The site has to be contiguous to the city limits. Public facilities, that is, the water, the sewer, the streets, have to be, have adequate capacity to support development of the site. The annexation has to be consistent with the annexation policies in the comprehensive plan. And in master plan nodes, it has to include a master plan application. That doesn't apply in this case, it's not actually within the master plan node, although it is directly adjacent to a master plan node. The concurrent zone change application, there are five approval criteria for that. The request has to be consistent with the statewide planning goals, has to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. Again, public facilities have to have adequate capacity to support development at the intensity of the requested zone. The change has to be in the public interest, and critically, the request has to conform to the transportation planning rule under state law, which is one of the things that implements the statewide planning goals regarding transportation. Looking at the transportation planning rule a little more closely, we find that the proposal would significantly affect a transportation facility as defined under state law, because it would degrade the performance of an existing facility that's otherwise projected not to meet performance standards, that being the Levens and Ellendale intersection, which already does not meet performance standards and would be affected by the additional traffic from this project. If it's termed, there is a significant effect from a rezoning proposal. State law says that we essentially have to ensure that there is some kind of mitigating measure that would address that, that impact, and so of the combination of remedies that are listed, one of those is for development agreements, to ensure that improvements are made to the transportation system, either concurrent with or otherwise specified in some kind of timed arrangement as to when those improvements will be provided. So, there is a recommended condition of approval, that the developer enter into a development agreement pursuant to those provisions, where they would pay essentially 6% of the total project cost for the Ellendale and Levens traffic signal to mitigate the effect of the, the added traffic from the zone change. So, with that condition of approval noted, Planning Commission has made recommendation to the city council in support of the annexation and the zone change. Ultimately, annexations and, and zone changes of this nature, authority of that rests with the council, so you're the ones who make the decision on that. But that is essentially the conclusion of my staff report here. Happy to answer questions you may have. Obviously, the written report goes into a fair bit more detail, but these are kind of the broad strokes, so.
Does the city council have any questions of staff? Yes.
I have two questions, Chase. Question number one, can you help us understand what a development agreement is?
Yes, so it's essentially a contract between, in this case, the city and the property owner, the developer, specifying certain specifications of development. The key aspect is that they are recorded against the property, so if the property ownership changes, that agreement carries on with the land, and so we do those kinds of agreements all the time for deferred improvements of, you know, water, street infrastructure, what have you. They're, they're fairly common, it's just a, a way of recording some kind of specific arrangements and land.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, in this case, the proposed development agreement has already been negotiated, pending council approval of the application, and it addresses the 6% obligation that the developer would pay, 6% toward the cost of the traffic signal. That, I think, corresponds to the developer's proportionate impact based on the traffic study.
Right.
That was my next question, is where did the 6% come from?
Ah, yes.
Yeah, so the developer did a traffic study that evaluated their traffic impact, not only at Levens and Ellendale, but all the intersections leading up to that and intersections beyond that, all the way down to Main Street in Ellendale. And so, the development agreement really focuses on intersections that are, that are or would be failing with this zone change, right? And so, that, the only intersection that that qualifies is the Levens and Ellendale intersection, and so that's why the development agreement is specific to that intersection. Their proposal with their zoning would accommodate, or would send, 6% of the total volume of traffic that that intersection receives would be received from this development. So, the proportionate share would be, hey, if we're sending 6% of the traffic to that intersection, we should pay 6% of the improvement that needs to take place, and so that's where we arrived at that 6%. We have planned and are planning on improving that intersection next summer. We have an active application in with the state of Oregon for a Safe for House of School grant, construction grant. We, along with the school district, were a recipient of a planning Safe for House of School grant in the last couple of years, did a big study of all the intersections around all of our schools in Dallas, and this was identified as the intersection that needed the improvements first. So, we feel, you know, pretty confident with our grant application moving forward. We won't know the outcome of that grant until this fall, but regardless of whether or not we're awarded that grant, the city will move forward with the construction of that project next year. Instead of using grant dollars, we'd use a loan repaid with system development revenue that we have on hand to pay for that. We just don't want to deplete the revenues all at once, we do a loan probably over five years to repay that off, and then, once that's completed, the agreement would require the developer to pay the 6%.
Yes, sir.
Since this, since this is before us, I presume that the county has already said they're good with it?
So, the county does get notice as part of this, right, Chase? So, and they provided no comments?
Yeah.
All right. Do we have any additional costs that will incur bringing services up to that property, or is it already, already there?
So, the property already has water service essentially abutting it. There is not currently sewer service to the property, so the developer will be looking to extend a sewer main line from the intersection of Columbia, essentially up to their property at, at their expense, and thereafter, it would be a, a city main line to be maintained in the future. Other properties further along, James Howe, would be able to tie into that and use it, so it wouldn't be exclusively for their benefit, but it would be built with their development. Stormwater would be detained on site and then discharged into Forestry Creek, which is, like I said, clipping kind of that bottom corner of their property, so there shouldn't be any ongoing expense to the city for stormwater on that. And then, long-term maintenance of James Howe Road, they would be doing frontage improvements, so there'd be additional, you know, sidewalks and pavement and turn lanes, bike lanes, what have you for that, but that's just sort of standard with any development, so.
And did I hear you correctly, Brian, that the cost, the 6% fee would be paid upon approval of the permit in one lump sum?
Yeah, I think the development agreement is just negotiated, says that they would pay upon application of their initial building permits, so.
So, is it, is it our intention to have that signal in at Levens and Ellendale prior to the first apartment being built?
Yeah, I think that that would be, working with kind of their timing and our timing, I think that that's the plan, which is why it's written that way in the, in the agreement. So, again, we plan on, we have design-ready plans, you know, 100% ready to go, we just have to put it out to bid, and so we will do that this, this coming winter for the spring-summer construction season next year. They're going through the annexation and zone change now, the developer, if approved, would have to then go through a development permit application, go into the planning commission to receive approval of that, and that's going to take some time, so their construction of, of anything out there really won't take place until at least next summer, and so I think the timing of that will work out well.
And I think it's important to comment as well that what you're reviewing is the annexation and the zone change, not actual, like, development proposals. That comes at a, at a future date, once the zoning for the site has kind of set the rules of development.
The infrastructure upgrades that you listed a minute ago that the developer would be responsible for, is that going to be paid for by SDC money?
It's entirely possible that at least some of it might be eligible for reimbursement or credit. I don't know that we've looked at that specifically.
Well, and it's not an issue for today, but I just wondered how it was gonna play out, okay.
It's, it's possible, since they do have some improvements that are extending off-site, sometimes that is eligible for SDC reimbursement, so we'll have to look at that when the development application comes.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, yeah, just a reminder, tonight's hearing is just to decide whether it meets the conditions of approval for an annexation and whether you think the proposed zoning is appropriate for the property, that's really the extent of the decision-making. Questions, as Chase said, about the development itself, at this point, are really speculative because we don't have a development application in front of us.
Okay, we will now hear from the applicant. As a reminder, you have 15 minutes to present. Please state your name and address for the record.
Mayor, councilors, my name is Dwight Untai, I'm the president of Tokula Properties. My address is P.O. Box 1620, Fresham, Oregon. I do not have an extensive presentation for you this evening, I just wanted to take the opportunity to introduce myself and just give you a little brief background, and this, of course, is just regarding the annexation and zone change, but by way of general background, Tokula Properties is an Oregon-based real estate development, construction, and property management company, and we're focused on apartments, multifamily, or mixed-use development and hotels. We've had some recent development in the area, we developed the Independence Landing Apartments and the Independence Hotel in Independence, Oregon, as an example, and we also recently completed a project in Woodburn, Oregon. We're long-term investors, we're not speculative builders, we're not going to build and break from the community, and I want to mention that only because I think it's important for communities to understand that, you know, as a long-term investor, we're looking at communities where we think have, that have a long-term bright investment future, and we feel very strongly about that with Dallas. You have a, just a really charming community, a wonderful walkable downtown, you've got wonderful public amenities in the way of parks, and you've got the basket slough, and of course, you know all these things, your location to the coast, Salem, easy access to Portland, all these things make it a very attractive community that we think has a great long-term investment potential, and that's why we're here. You know, other things about Dallas that, that struck us as one, I think you have, from all my research and from your housing needs analysis, you have a real defined need for some additional multifamily housing, you need some more diversity in your housing stock, I think that's going to be very, very helpful, and that's an area of great focus for us. So, I, I also, just to kind of reiterate the city attorney's comments there, yes, we, we have agreed to the development agreement and to the payment of the 6% towards that, towards that intersection. So, that's really all I have, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you this evening, and I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you. Does the city council have any questions of the applicant? Thank you. Public testimony will now be allowed, please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes to testify, and we will alert you when you have 30 seconds remaining. At the three-minute mark, your testimony will end. As a reminder, if you will be testifying, please direct your testimony to the applicant criteria identified in the staff report, any criteria that you believe should be applicable. Okay, this is David Sutherland. You're welcome. Please state your name and address.
David Sutherland, P.O. Box 564, Dallas, Oregon, 97338. Physical location, we have a farm at 15335 West Ellendale, and then our residence And then our residence is at 1460 West Ellendale in Dallas. Thank you for this opportunity. It's the first time I've ever done this, so I appreciate you bearing with me. We, I'm David Sutherland. My wife, Susan, is here. We have, we own, we planted a vineyard over 20 years ago on West Ellendale. And we've had that property for 33 years. And we also established a vineyard up on James Howe at just north of the 325. It was 385, James Howe Road. But we sold that property. We are zoned where we are, west, immediately west of the subject property here. We're zoned farm/forest. And we're not aware that we have options other than farm/forest. We have done very well with the vineyard adventure that we've had. We don't oppose progress. That's not our agenda. But I've worked in the agricultural, chemical, and fertilizer business my whole career. And I'm aware that herbicides used for weed control in lawns, which would be 24D, MCPB, dicamba, are 100 times more toxic to grapes than they are to the weeds and to the dandelions in the lawns. And so I don't know what you do about that. But if this is developed and we have lawns and people contract weed control on their lawns, it presents a huge hazard for us. So I just need to make sure that you're aware of that. We want to be a good neighbor, but we don't want to lose our livelihood. And that is at risk. A question we have is for this proposed development, our property is immediately to the west of that, across that creek. And so I'm wondering what kind of fence will be required of this development that would give us some protective barrier to protect our valuable agricultural assets? Does that make sense?
So you have 30 seconds left.
Three seconds?
30, 30.
Oh, I should be able to put a wrap on this. I don't think I have anything else. It's just, we appreciate this opportunity to be here, we think, in front of this adventure. And look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody waiting on the phone? We continue with the meeting. We will not. We will now allow the applicant five minutes for rebuttal.
You don't have to. If you don't want to, you can find a way.
Top channel.
All right, thanks.
Do any members of the council have any additional questions about this matter for the staff?
I do. It's a concern I never thought about with a neighbor here. Is there anything we can talk, we can talk or describe what could possibly be done to guarantee that the neighboring vineyard isn't damaged?
Not tonight.
Yeah, so Councilor Shane's correct. So tonight's just whether or not you want to annex the property into the city and apply a zone to it. In the future, there's considerations that would be made, and it would be a more appropriate time to look at that at that time, because you'll know what is proposed, right? What is the development that's going to occur? We don't know that yet. But once the property is annexed, once it has a zone and you can start to receive a development application, we would look to say, okay, what's being proposed? What's the impact to the surrounding neighbors? Does a fence at that time, you know, make sense? So you can require that it's a condition of development? But that's not something you would consider tonight. But that's something that would be considered, would be thought about with a development permit.
So that will be brought back to us?
Yes, and that would come back to the planning commission.
I have a question.
Sure.
So from the way I'm picturing this, that area, on one side you have farm/forest zoning, and isn't most of the other surrounding area a single-family residential?
So as you go on the east side of James Howe Road, the land immediately to the east, on the north side of that Wyatt node, is a low-density residential. As you go towards Ellendale, you start hitting some medium. And Chase, I can't remember if there's any high-density residential zoning in the Wyatt node. I know there's at least medium.
I don't see any on the slide that he showed us.
Yeah, I think it's just medium-density residential in the Wyatt node, so. And that's on the, that's south, which is the medium-density residential as well. So but on the east side, you can see the light color brown where it's subdivided. That's low-density residential. As you go further to the south, where it's kind of the same color as the proposal, that's medium-density residential. So about a third to just under a half of the Wyatt node is zoned for the same zoning that the applicant's asking for tonight.
Any other questions? There are no further discussion. I will close the public hearing at 7:30. Is there a motion by the city council?
I move to recommend that the city council approve the annexation of the subject property and approve the zone change to residential medium-density.
Second.
If I may.
Can you?
Yeah, we, and it's not in the report, but we need to include in there, subject to the condition of approval.
Yes, that's right.
Which includes the development agreement?
Yeah, if you want to make that just part of your motion, that's good enough.
That's part of the agreement.
Yeah.
Which is the requirement of the development agreement.
So you want your motion to include the condition of approval, correct?
Yeah.
All right.
Wasn't your fault. It wasn't included in your statement.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Give it a second. Is there any other discussion? We will now vote on the motion. And the motion was...
Recommend that the city council approve the annexation of the subject property and approve the zone change to residential medium-density to then...
Subject to the condition of approval.
Yes, subject to the condition of approval.
Okay. We'll now vote on this. So all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, opposed?
No.
That's the majority.
So you'll have an ordinance approving the zone change and annexation at your next meeting?
In order to reflect the city council's decision tonight, it will be mailed to the applicant and all participants of record within 10 business days. Thank you. Next thing on the agenda is public comment. We have two people wanting to speak. First one is Ann Hurd. Please state your name and address.
I'm Ann Hurd, 623 Southwest Hayter Street in Dallas.
You've got three minutes.
I am president of Friends of Dallas Aquatic Center. And I just want to just make a brief report on what we're doing now. School is out, and all the rec swims are back where they used to be to pre-COVID levels. So that means a lot of swim, a lot of swimming is happening. Swimming lessons for the first section are three-quarters full. So that's really good, and they anticipate that they will be full when they start. There were a few issues with a hot water pipe earlier at the end of May and beginning of June, but they got that fixed. And there were some complaints about the temperatures of the pools weren't what they were supposed to be. But they got all that fixed. And then now, the Lacy River will have its pump replaced by June 30th. She promises it's got to be done before the end of the fiscal year. So that's a $30,000 pump. And the FDAC is paying the $13,000 that's going to cost to install it. So that's one use of our money. Another thing we did recently is, you know, that we got that counter from the Bank of America at just the barest cost, like a little over $1,000 to move it over to the aquatic center. And look at it now.
It's gorgeous.
Gretchen, who is the manager of the pool, designed this beautiful wraparound for the counter. The bottom sand kind of goes with the floor, and then the sky blue at the top goes with the color of the walls, the new color of the walls.
Nice.
I'm going to pass one of these around each way so that you can take a closer look at it. It's really just stunning when you go in there. And we paid for that, $1,200. So we also have a donation drive going on. We sent out, put it on our Facebook page, and put it on Facebook. And so far, we've gotten $500 in a week. So we're hoping that that will continue, and we'll be off and running again for another successful year. So that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That does look good.
Okay, next. Next is Robert Greenway. Please state your name and address.
Hello, Robert Greenway, 2223 Southeast Academy. I guess I get my three minutes. I am protesting my three minutes for the simple reason that you all know that it says in your own paperwork that it's five minutes. The only reason it changes to six minutes is because the mayor made a unilateral decision to change it to three minutes for no obvious reason, except that he wanted to. It's not like there's people waiting in line that somebody couldn't talk. She couldn't talk five minutes, I couldn't talk five minutes. So if you want to be a dictator, you go right ahead. Second of all, I just approached a couple of people, and they said that what I have to say is an opinion. And I try to stay away from opinions and conjecture. I deal with facts, and the five-minute rule is a fact, okay? The next thing is the sewer. The sewer rates are $45 for a couple, which is me a residential. If I lived in a 55 and older or any mobile home park, I would pay $33. If I lived in an apartment, I would pay $33. And that is facts. So you can't deny that there's something wrong with that, except that you want to do it because you can, even though there's no logical reason for it. Next thing is the increase in the EMS and police. I talked to Mr. Lott about that. He gave me a lot of information about why it came about and how it happened. And I can see, you know, what he was talking about. Evidently, from what I got from his email, was that before he came five years ago, your council, your city, or everything was all screwed up. And now you're trying to make up for lost time because they didn't do things right back then. That's what I'm getting from what he told me, okay? If he's been here five years, you know, then I would think that, you know, the increases are always necessary. I've never complained about that. But if he's been here five years, then why didn't it increase instead of 110% at one jump? So in other words, this month, we're paying less than $6. Next month, we're paying $1,250, okay? He says it's needed, okay? Well, why wasn't that amount added slowly over the five years, you know? It doesn't, you know, again, it doesn't make sense, but it's a fact, that it went up 110%. Next thing, real quick, that me and Mr. Lott have talked about is your building department. I'm trying to hold it responsible. He said, Mr. Lott, we've talked about it a lot. Says that they're doing it internally. But for the last four months, I've been dealing with the building department and the building state. And there is quite a bit of not doing things the way it should be done by the building department. And they need to be held accountable. If you want to find further information, you can talk to me about it, or you can talk to Mr. Lott about it. He knows exactly what's going on. There is, everything I've gave him are facts, which nobody wants to check on, you know? Everybody, you guys are the ones that have the opinion. And I want to prove to you factually what's actually, you know, happening, so.
Thanks, Ron.
That's probably my three minutes.
Yep.
Thank you, sirs.
Any other public testimony coming? Next is the consent agenda. And this includes the financial report for May 2024, city attorney contract amendment, and police station project update. Anything you want to withdraw from the consent agenda?
Move to per second.
All those in favor of consent agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Reports and comments from the mayor and council members. Does anybody have any comments?
Yes, sir. I just wanted to actually ask a question. With the crazy days or Dallas days coming up, are we entertaining floats for the city council? Or any entries for the group? Or is that something we should be interested in?
It's a great time to ask the question, Councilor Briggs. So Dallas Days is coming up, July 26th and 27th. Is that the right dates, whatever the Friday, Saturday is in July? And so it's being run through a community group this year, which is great. So that's kind of took some burden off the city. But yes, they are going to have a parade. And I think, just like what we did for the 150th, we had a float, and the council mayor were able to get on that. We can do something like that again. Last year, I think we had some of the mayor and councilors ride in some city vehicles, like fire apparatus and stuff like that. So we can do that. Just kind of, you know, one, the question for you is, do you want to do something? And two, what do you want it to look like? And we can make that happen.
I'd like sunny weather and warm. That'd be great.
I don't quite have those powers, but we can hope.
Do we have to vote on that? Would it do any good?
I think it's just a human.
Yeah, chances are it's going to be hot, it's July, end of July. So feeling good about having an entry in the parade?
Yeah.
Yeah? Do you want to ride in city vehicles like you did last year? Or would you rather have like a trailer with hay bales or something like that, like we did for the 150th?
I liked the fire truck ride, that was fun. Or two.
Josh, you're hearing what the consensus of the council sounds to be like.
We'll pick up the engine the next week or so.
That'd be a good one.
Oh, so we'll have it, we'll be going in service right away. But we'll have it by then. That's cool.
All right. So it sounds like that's what we'll try to do. So I will send an email out to the council. If you can reply to me, if you'll be available, that'd be fine. And then I'll work with the fire department to find out how many seats we have in case you have a family member or something that you would want to bring along with you.
That'd be awesome.
Reports from city manager and staff.
Thank you, Mayor Woods. So I have one report tonight, and that's on page 96 of the agenda. And it is regarding our EMS supervising physician. So as part of our Mercy Medical Services, we are required to have a medical director that kind of oversees the work, make sure we're doing everything the way we should. And that person is Dr. Lucas, who has been our supervising physician for several years. It's been a while since we've done any compensation adjustments for that person. I think the last time was back in 2021. And so the city of Monmouth and Impotence, through Polk One, also use the same supervising physician. They approved a 5% increase, so we're proposing to match that, which would put her total compensation each month at $717. It's a pretty good deal for what we're getting. And so that's what the recommendation is. There's a motion at the bottom of the report on page 96, if you'd like to do that.
She's okay with this?
Yep.
Looking for a motion?
Yeah.
I move to approve a 5% increase in the compensation of the city's EMS supervising physician, effective July 1 of 2024.
Second.
You know, I haven't, that $717 might be five-point odds, some order. It may not be exactly. If we could amend the motion to approve $717 a month, yeah.
I'll amend that to approve...
That clearly ties to the agreement.
A compensation increase of $717, effective July 1, 2024.
That'll be the total compensation, yeah.
Moved in second. Any more discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, pushing carries. Anything else?
Nope, that's my own report.
Next is first reading of ordinance. Next is first reading of ordinance is ordinance number 1895.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance amending Dallas City Code Section 5.522 relating to livestock, chickens, bees, and rabbits and declaring an emergency. So this is an ordinance that you have not seen. This is the first time you're looking at it, so I'll kind of walk through it a little bit. When you adopted your development code revisions the last go-around a few months back, the regulation of chickens and other animals was in the development code. You also have some nuisance rules in the municipal code regarding livestock and other animals. And so we decided at the time to move everything out of the development code and put it into the municipal code. So currently, we took all the code provisions out of the development code. We're now wanting to put the provisions back into the municipal code so that we can, you know, regulate that when people are kind of out of bounds on what they should be doing. So that's what's proposed here. The city attorney, working with staff and code services, put the language together. And it's before you for your consideration. There is just one change to what's being proposed here, and that is on page 100 of your report. Under subsection H, it says, no person, or it says chickens and rabbits may only be kept and used for personal, family, and household use and for educational uses when chickens... Oh, sorry. It's after H. It's subsection I. That's what I meant to say. I had highlighted H. But I says the slaughtering of poultry is prohibited. We thought we should also prohibit the slaughtering of rabbits. So adding the slaughtering of poultry and rabbits. So the addition and rabbits for the first reading. So that's the only change that's recommended.
I have a question or concern here on D. It says, no part of a coop or other structure or enclosures that houses chickens or rabbits shall be located closer than 10 feet from a rear lot line or sideline nor closer than 15 feet from any dwelling. So that means you couldn't put a chicken coop three feet or five feet, which is normal setback off of a lot line. Is there a reason why we're making a difference between that and a normal structure?
Yeah, I think it's the use of the structure, right? You have animals that tend to make noise, have smells, stuff like that. So putting it a little bit further away from a house, a little further away from your property line will keep it a little bit further away from the neighboring house. In some single-family homes, you're going to be located, you know, your coop could potentially be located within, you know, six or eight feet. That's pretty close. And so this would allow it to be a little bit further away and hopefully reduce the nuisance effect of having chickens or rabbits.
So how does that affect people who currently have a chicken coop three or five feet off the property line? Do they have to move it?
Yes. And there's a provision within the ordinance that gives them, yeah, section two gives them 60 days to bring their chick coop into compliance with the rules.
Not going to happen on mine. Can we move, put it in there that current conditions are grandfathered in with current uses? And if it's to be rebuilt, then it can be rebuilt into the correct setbacks? There are a lot of chicken coops that are built according to code that would then fall under. I don't have one.
But he's right, there are quite a few.
Mine would have to be moved. And although I don't have chickens in it now, I don't want to move it.
I don't know, Lynn, how do you feel about a non-conforming clause? I mean, you can certainly do it.
I'm sure there's a lot around town.
Yeah, council, you can direct that be, that be added for a second reading. It's entirely up to you.
A grandfather clause?
Yeah, sure. You can describe it that way. It would be, as I said, I think I would focus it on the location of a coop. So we're not, if you've got roosters out there or you've got...
We can't have roosters.
Oh, I know, I understand that, yeah. So we're just, all we're doing is addressing the locational requirements of a coop. We could say that coop presently located, situated, not in compliance with the code can remain standing, as long as it's within the permitted setbacks, can remain standing until it, but if it's ever replaced, then it has to be replaced within the compliance. That'd be the gist of it.
For purposes of domestic tranquility, I think that's probably a good idea.
Is there, and we may not be able to, I'm just brainstorming. Is there a way for us to say something about unless you complain? So I'm one of those people. I do have hens, and I don't want to move it because I'm lazy. I could, I just don't want to. So I'm happy that we're considering this. But if my neighbors complained about it, is there some way we could say, like, if I wasn't maintaining it or it was stinky or...
Well, then you're out of compliance with other conditions. I'm just talking about the locational criteria.
Okay, because then I'm out of compliance with other things. Okay, good.
So can we strike D out completely then if it's, or are we wanting to apply this to new?
No, I think you would still, you'd want to apply it to new chicken coops.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
And any chicken coop that's being replaced. So if you have an existing chicken coop and it's falling apart and you want to provide a new one, you'd have to build it compliant with the new standards. But we would provide a non-conforming clause or an existing condition clause for, limited to the location of the coop.
I mean, to me, it's no different than coming to me now and saying, I need to move my wood shop because it's making noise. So I just think that it...
Right. And in the development code, we have non-conforming provisions for structures and stuff like that. So this would be likened to that.
Yep.
It's very common to have grandfather language like that that says, you can keep what you have, but if you ever replace it or you want to build something new, it must be in compliance with the new rules. That's something that we do in the development code all the time.
So this language would be...
I will bring back amended ordinance for second reading.
Just to point out one other thing that's going on with this proposed rule. The minimum setback for rear setbacks in currents, our current zones, is 10 feet. So there are a lot of houses that are now built with a rear yard of 10 feet. So you're saying that there will be no chicken coops in these places. Just...
I didn't hear that, Michael. Did you repeat that?
There's, minimum rear setback is only 10 feet now. There are houses that are being built with a 10-foot yard. They will not be able to have chickens anywhere. So just pointing it out.
Interesting.
I have a question. So say two years from now, somebody has a chicken coop that somebody complains about. How do we know the date that it's built?
Good question.
Yeah, that's always a, it's a, it's a great question. It's something that we can look at, you know, aerial photos, historical aerial photos to be able to determine, was something actually there? You can, you know, probably look at the newness of the structure, right? I mean, does the wood still have, you know, sap oozing on it? Or, you know, I mean, there's some tricks you can look at, but a lot of that's going to just be, you know, some research that'll have to happen at the time we receive a complaint. There's not, there's not a perfect, perfect...
Actually, everybody has receipts or pictures of when they built their coop. Do you do a free permit, like a permit that doesn't cost like that, if somebody registered? I just don't want to do it that way, but I'm just throwing out ideas.
Yeah, I don't think we need to, I wouldn't worry too much about it. We don't get a lot of complaints regarding chickens and chicken coops. When we do, it's usually someone's chickens are running around at large, which we're not going to allow. When the chickens are generally in their coops, we don't get a lot of complaints.
Now, I have a concern about two I, the slaughtering one, where we were going to add rabbits to it. One of, rabbits and chickens aren't the only things you're allowed to have. For example, you could have cattle, and my neighbor does. So I'm thinking maybe it might make more sense to have that read, to have that just general, no slaughtering period, that we've covered everything instead of trying to itemize it one by one.
Could you do that? Although, if I can't. I don't think I would do that in I because I is part of sub two, and that's just about chickens and rabbits.
Oh, I see, yeah.
Maybe make it, make a similar, a parallel provision in subsection one.
Okay, yeah, that'd work.
But you'll leave it that they can't maintain a slaughtery tanner?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
So I'll bring up one more issue that was, kind of raises a question, and I don't really have a great answer for it. And that is under H, this is why I highlighted it. It talks about, no person shall sell chickens, chicken eggs, or rabbits or engage in the breeding of chickens or rabbits or fertilizer production for commercial purposes. There's probably a lot of people that sell their eggs in town. How do we reconcile that?
Well, what's driving the policy change here? Is there a problem in selling eggs currently?
It's probably in limiting commercial activity in a residential area. To have a little egg farm in a residential...
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of the purpose of the policy, to not allow that. Well, we don't see a lot of people selling chickens or rabbits or stuff like that, but we do see eggs pretty rarely getting sold. So.
In or out?
I don't know if we want to keep selling chickens and rabbits, but maybe remove selling eggs as an activity that's not prohibited.
That might be the best way to finesse it.
Yeah, I think.
It'd be limited in scope because you only got five hens anyways. You're not selling a lot of eggs.
It's not like a Chinese business.
Yeah, they're not...
Maybe five a day, maybe.
Yeah, they're not pulling up, you know, yeah, racks and racks of eggs in their house or anything, you know?
Okay.
Probably a couple dozen a time. So I would take out chicken eggs, but we've been chickens and rabbits.
Rabbit eggs?
Yeah, you can sell those.
Sell the chocolate ones, Ken. All right. There goes Easter.
All right, if I can summarize then, we will add a general prohibition on slaughtering in subsection one to those animals. Or I'll figure out some way to do it anyway, so that it covers those as well as chickens and rabbits. We'll take out the prohibition against selling chicken eggs and we'll add some sort of grandfathering provision as to the locational requirements for coops.
Sounds all right?
Yeah, sounds good.
You'll see those on second reading.
I will declare that ordinance number 1895 is passed as first reading. Second reading of ordinance, ordinance number 1894.
Thank you, Mayor. 1894 is an ordinance amending Dallas City Code Section 5.102 relating to the discharge of weapons. And so again, this is a reminder, this ordinance is relating specifically to, like the Civil War reenactment that takes place at the middle school each year. They fire off blanks, track and field events where they have the starter gun that has a blank. It's adding those as exemptions to the discharge of weapons ordinance.
Any questions? Secretary, please call and roll.
Councilverden?
Yes.
Council President Schilling?
Yes.
Council Adams?
Yes.
Council Barantos?
Yes.
Council Briggs?
Yes.
Council Collins?
Yes.
Council Jance?
Yes.
Council Shane?
Yes.
Passes eight to zero.
I declare ordinance number 1894 is passed as second reading. Resolutions. Resolution 3529.
Thank you. This is a resolution declaring the city of Dallas's election to receive state revenues. This is essentially saying that when the state shares their money, we want it.
So I have a secretary call. Roll, please.
Council President Schilling?
Yes.
Council Adams?
Yes.
Council Barantos?
Yes.
Council Briggs?
Yes.
Council Collins?
Yes.
Council Jance?
Yes.
Council Shane?
Yes.
Councilverden?
Yes.
Passes eight to zero.
Next is Resolution 3530.
This is a resolution adopting the city, or the budget of the city of Dallas, Oregon for the fiscal period beginning July 1st, 2024 and ending June 30th, 2025, making budgeted appropriations and levying taxes for said fiscal period. So in summary, this is the adoption of the city budget for this next fiscal year.
With the amendment you made tonight?
Yes, with the amendment of the, you mean disinfection of the wastewater treatment plant change.
Secretary, please call and roll.
Council Adams?
Yes.
Council Barantos?
Yes.
Council Briggs?
Yes.
Council Collins?
Yes.
Council Jance?
Yes.
Council Shane?
Yes.
Councilverden?
Yes.
Council President Schilling?
Yes.
Passes eight to zero.
Next is Resolution 3532.
3531, you mean?
31, yeah.
You skipped one?
Yep.
Yep.
So Resolution...
3531.
Yeah, so Resolution 3531 is a resolution adopting periodic cost index-based changes to the system development charges. So this is an item that came out of the Public Administration Committee, or Public Works Committee. It's the Public Works Committee, one of those two committees. And so the city of Dallas charges five different charges for system developments. And the, those are allowed to be applied to cost index annually. The city of Dallas was doing that for many years. In 2013, 2014, they stopped doing that for all of the charges except transportation. Transportation stopped the index in 2018. So the recommendation from the committee was to approve a resolution applying annually the construction cost index and doing a one-time adjustment for each of the indexes going back to the year where we stopped. And so 2014 forward for water, sewer, stormwater, and parks, and 2018 forward for transportation doing a one-time adjustment. What that really roughly equates to on a single-family house is about a, between a $7,000 and $8,000 one-time adjustment per house. And then it would again be annually adjusted based on the construction cost index, which is traditionally the lower cost index between that and the building construction index.
Questions?
Just to comment, a general comment, as much as we don't ever like to jack up fees, we all know what's the price of construction materials has been since in the last few years, and particularly since the pandemic. So we need to close this gap.
Any other discussion? Secretary, please call and roll.
Council Barantos?
Yes.
Council Briggs?
Yes.
Council Collins?
Yes.
Council Jance?
Yes.
Council Shane?
Yes.
Councilverden?
Yes.
Council President Schilling?
Yes.
Council Adams?
Yes.
Passes eight to zero.
Next is Resolution 3532.
Is it in the packet?
It is. It's on page 131. So Resolution 3532 is a resolution adopting the city of Dallas fee schedule and repealing Resolution 3506. So with this resolution, there's a few little changes from previous years. And so, one, we looked at, so your building fees and some of the fire fees are subject to an automatic consumer price index adjustment. So that'll take place July 1st. We looked at all of our other fees within the fee schedule and thought a 3.8 cost adjustment was appropriate. That was the consumer price index for this, that we use for the city of Dallas for this last year. Not all the fees were adjusted. There were some that we kept at the same price. An example of that is the banner programs that we have downtown. We're still within the amount of money it costs to make those banners and hang them year after year. So that's an example of a fee we didn't increase. Copying costs at the library, we didn't increase those fees. And there's a few others as well. And then section three of the resolution talks about the fees for parks, reservations, and the aquatic center, having those be effective on January 1st instead of July 1st. And that's because park reservations and a lot of the aquatic center programming takes place during the summer, so the busy season. And so it makes sense to not adjust those fees kind of mid-season. So that's an off-season adjustment taking place in January when there's not as much, especially in parks reservations going on at that time, because we don't allow them then, to do the adjustment at that time. So all the other fees would be effective July 1st, except for parks, reservations, and aquatic center. Those adjusted fees would take effect January 1st.
Questions?
So there's a redlined version of the, of the fee schedule, which you can see, I think it's a green text that shows the new proposed fees. And then the resolution includes all the fees as adjusted.
Any discussion? Secretary, call and roll, please.
Council Briggs?
Yes.
Council Collins?
Yes.
Council Jance?
Yes.
Council Shane?
Yes.
Counselor Verden?
Yes.
Counselor President Schilling?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Bariantos?
Yes.
Passes eight to zero.
Any other business?
Yeah, just a quick one. The annual community awards banquet is this Friday evening. And it's a little different this year. It's a joint program between the Chamber and the Downtown Association. Both organizations will be handing out awards in various categories. And there's probably a couple of surprises in there, too. I just encourage everybody who's got tickets to attend. If you don't have tickets, it's actually too late because they're all sold.
The city of Dallas bought a table, so we have some seats.
Ah, there you go.
Has not let... Yeah, let me know that you want to come, let me know.
But it's a great party and an opportunity to celebrate the people who really go above and beyond to help make the community a better place. So highly encouraged.
Okay. I will close this round.
Sorry. June nineteenth... You can hold it there for just a second. It's like, two minutes. June nineteenth is the day that marks the end of slavery in the United States and celebrates the resilience, culture, and contributions of Black Americans. And as we honor this historic occasion, we also need to reflect on the significance of the freedom as well as the ongoing work that's still needed to create a more inclusive and equitable society. And part of this work involves addressing the harmful impact of public depictions of slave owners, including right here in Dallas. These depictions can be pretty deeply hurtful to descendants of enslaved people, and they perpetuate a negative stereotype that glorifies a pretty painful and oppressive past.[1442.61]